Are those speakers on? No, that's not on.
Good evening, everyone. At seven o'clock, we'll go ahead and get started. Welcome to this meeting of the Smyrna City Council. It's Monday, March fifteenth. Happy that we have Reverend Derek Porter from Smyrna First United Methodist Church at thirteen fifteen Concord Road with us this evening. If you'll please come up. This is my pastor, so I'll be on my best behavior. Please join us for the invocation pledge. Everybody, please rise.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the ability to be together in all forms. Gracious God, we ask for your blessing upon this council, that you will continue to guide and to lead them, continue to fill them with your wisdom, to continue to lead them in making good and great decisions for the city of Smyrna and all of its citizens. Gracious God, help us that as we come through this pandemic, that as we come into times of of normalcy, as we come to places where we are starting to be more open, help us to remember what it means to be alone. Help us to remember what it means to be apart, and that we be people unfocused on continuing to bring others together and to never feel alone. Almighty God, we thank you for this community. We thank you for the love and the generosity and the graciousness that you pour on it and in it every day. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Porter, for being with us and for all you do for this community. We really appreciate you. Item two is agenda changes. We have none. Item three is the mayoral report. I have no report. I do have a couple of notes, though. Thankfully and happily, this is our last meeting in the large gym. We are going to be canceling the meeting on April fifth, so our next meeting of the council will be Monday, April nineteenth, and that will be back in City Hall. So I'm pleased that we're finally able to get back over there and let's see. Item four is land issue zonings annexations. We have several. We don't have any formal business, so most of our agenda is zonings and annexations. Item A twenty twenty-one dash zero two five is a public hearing. V twenty-one dash zero zero six, reduce rear setback from thirty feet to twenty feet. Landlot five twenty-six, thirteen thirty-five, Cliffwood Drive, Jarrett King. This is in Mr. Gould's district. Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I can ask Rusty to come up and maybe just give us a bit of overview of the variance request, please.
Good evening. Rusty Martin, Community Development Director for the city of Smyrna. The applicant is requesting a rear yard setback from thirty feet to twenty feet for a building addition at the corner of Cliffwood and Hayes Drive. The property is a corner lot. It, the, the, the house sits oriented towards the corner, corner of the lot, so it's sort of catty corner and it's, it's a funny orientation to the lot. So anything they construct out there is basically going to need a variance, but the applicant is proposing to build a sixteen hundred square foot building addition. That building addition will be attached to the house via a covered breezeway. The addition's proposed to be sixteen hundred square feet with a two-car garage, a living space, and then some, some living area on the, on the second floor. Community Development and the rest of staff have reviewed the request. We're recommending approval of the variance with, with four conditions. One, that the, the variance be, the approval of the variance be conditioned upon the site plan submitted. Two, that the addition be utilized by family members only. Three, the applicant shall not lease or sublet or rent the space to the building addition. And number four, that these conditions run in perpetuity with the property. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you, Rusty. Just for the benefit of the audience, it's a bit unusual for us to hear a, a variance of this nature, right, a council?
Yep.
So I think it's, the prominence of the lot in Forest Hills raised its profile, right? And then also, a, will be probably a very nice building built on a piece of property that sits on a corner, sits a little bit awkwardly, as you mentioned, but it's a very nice piece of property and it'll be a prominent, prominent addition to the home. So how many, how many versions do you think we went through?
Yeah, I mean, when we, you know, variance request is typically a little bit easier than a rezoning. We don't require as much information. So the applicant submitted originally in their building elevations, made it look like a, basically a dwelling unit on a, on a single-family lot that, you know, was a little bit out of character. She worked with us. We went through, I mean, we've gone through seven iterations with us. I don't, you can ask her. I'm sure she's gone through more than that. But we ultimately got to an agreement as to, you know, the, the front of the addition and the exterior wall that's faces Hayes Drive are going to have windows and a garage door. So it's not going to look like a residential, a residence there. It's going to look like a building addition. The exterior door that connects the house to, connects the building addition to the house is interior to the lot, so you won't be able to see it from the road. So I think at this point, we, we've addressed a lot of the neighbors' concerns. I think everybody's happy at this point, from what I understand. So, you know, we're, we're satisfied and we're recommending approval of it.
Right, right. Thanks. And I think, you know, a key thing for, you know, for folks in neighborhood to hear, it's, you know, it's a, it's a struggle. It's a good discussion for the city where we want folks to be able to do what they want on their, on their personal property, right? But then also to be, be aware of how it may impact the neighborhood. So this is one of those things where some folks had some concerns, and I really appreciate the applicant working through with staff and Rusty and your group getting to a place I think where folks are pretty pleased.
Oh, yeah.
So appreciate that. So any questions from anybody in the council?
Is she, yeah, use your microphone so she can record it.
I take it it's a garage apartment with living space above?
Yes, it's sixteen hundred square foot building addition that has a garage, a living space with a small kitchenette, and then some living space above the garage.
Twenty by forty is eight hundred times two, sixteen hundred. And so how much garage space?
It's going to be a two-car garage, so it's, it's probably going to be four hundred square feet.
So, and it's going to be like roughly twelve hundred square foot living?
Yes.
And we've worked this out. This is for families only. I heard, I heard you say that.
That'd be a great question for her to explain exactly the family situation.
I'll wait then.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Rusty.
I'd like to invite the applicant up.
Ms. King, if you could come on up. Thanks so much for being here. Appreciate you, your willingness to roll through this with us, and I know it's a lot of work on your part, too. So would you like to share any, any comments or thoughts?
Yes, I just wanted to add to the comments. I appreciate the recommendation for approval. Would like to call attention to one stipulation regarding family use only. That is the intent. I think the question was, how is the space intended to be used? It is intended to be used for my purposes, for, for family. However, I understand the stipulations do travel in perpetuity with the property. I am a little bit concerned about resale value connected to certain stipulation. I think we've been clear that I need to adhere to the current ordinance. No rental, lease, sublet, but do want to raise the concern over traveling in perpetuity with such an additional stipulation outside of the ordinance that mandates or says family only. I think that could be a deterrent to resale. I think it could be a concern for a potential buyer in the future. Would ask that there be consideration to either striking that stipulation or modifying it to say friends, acquaintance, family. It's just really hard to enforce that for a future buyer, so wanted to be on record with that request.
Would you want to just provide a little background of why you're building, why you wanted to build this structure?
Yeah, the, the, the structure itself is intended for use by an aging mother who I hope to have used that space at some time in the future. The garage, part of the addition is due to the fact that there is no garage on the property now, and I understand that has been a deterrent to resale in the past. So the two-car garage addresses that issue, and the remaining space provides flexible living space for future use.
We had, just talked briefly before the meeting, and would you be okay with just with that two-car garage, just make, we add a stipulation where it maintains?
Absolutely. Yeah, the intent is the twelve hundred that's, that's in addition to the garage being used for the living space, but the garage is, I think Rusty calculated, it's four hundred square feet of garage space that would remain dedicated. And I would be fine with a stipulation on that, if that's something that you feel that you need to state.
And then I think on the point about family members, you know, it's a single, it's our, our fifteen, single-family zoning, right? So I think, as you said, currently it's in, it's in the ordinance that, you know, they need to be family members, and I don't know the language. So I think my thought is if, if the ordinance changed where multifamily or some version of that is allowed, then I would fully expect, you know, yourself, Wendell, or your future owner to come on back and, and ask for that, reasonably ask for that variant, you know, that stipulation to be removed, and I'm sure it would be, it would be granted at that time, I think, if the ordinance changes. But right now, it's single-family zoning, and I don't know if folks have other comments on that, but that's how I, that's how I see it.
Understood.
Well, I heard you ask about when, if, if it were, the house were to be sold and how you would enforce it with a future owner, but I think that would be the responsibility of the city, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct? Right, so it wouldn't be your responsibility, it'd be the city's to enforce it.
Understood. I think the concern there is if, if at some time in the future, the property were to become a rental property by myself or a future owner, if it's rented, it's rented to somebody that's not family. A family would have the entire use of both the primary dwelling and this addition. So it just becomes very difficult to enforce, and that was the thinking there. But I understand the ordinance and I understand the intent, and that it is a single family, and that is the intended use.
Just one question on the, the single, or the, the family only, like how long does somebody have? And that's not, might not be a question for you, might be Rusty or somebody else, but if you had a friend staying with you sometime who needed a place to stay, when does it become a violation of the stipulation that you had a friend staying with you in this extra suite versus a family member staying? I mean, how do we, how do we determine what the length of time is in which it becomes a violation? If they're not renting or subletting, you know, say somebody needed someone to stay, and it was a friend, not a family member, how do we make that determination with the stipulation? It seems difficult to.
It's on, I believe we have that in our ordinance. Maybe Rusty could speak to that in terms of how the ordinance reads?
Trying to probably determine what is a length of time, we probably wouldn't be able to do that, but our zoning ordinance currently defines a definition of family as three or less unrelated persons. So, you know, if it got to the point where somebody was staying there that, that wasn't related and for an extended period of time, we'd, we'd have to investigate it at that point, now whether or not whether, whether or not there, there was sufficient evidence for a code enforcement action, I don't know. We'd, we'd have to see what all the facts are at that time.
So the, the family that we're using in the stipulation would just carry the same definition as we have in the code for?
It would be the definition.
No more than three unrelated.
So did you have another?
Wait.
Did you have another follow-up you got?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Did you have another follow-up question?
No, that's okay. Thank you, Rusty.
I did. You said no more than three unrelated, so I can put two people in this house and it not be considered in a, in a rental space? Is that, am I hearing you right?
As far as meeting the definition of a family, yes.
But not a rental space. I mean, there's no, that's part of the.
Right, there's still, there's still a prohibition on renting it out, right? That's in the ordinance currently. But as far as definition of family, we're not changing anything in that. Somebody could have a single-family home right now and have this many people living in it without any changes, right? Like, I mean, if you had two or three unrelated people living in a single-family home right now, that doesn't violate our ordinance?
Right, that doesn't violate the ordinance.
But this isn't any change to that, it's just.
I, I guess my, my concern is, is with the, the rentals, so to speak, of this property. I, I, I don't want to begin the process of, of allowing second dwellings on a single-family lot and, and there being, you know, popping up every third house down the street that's where somebody's going to put a garage apartment in and rent the space out or use it as a VRBO or a B, Airbnb, whatever, and that's, the potential is there. And that's, that is where I'm concerned, I guess. Is there something to prevent that?
Well, I mean, we've placed a stipulation on this property that she, that she's not going to be able to rent the property out for any gain.
Short term or, or long term?
Or long term.
Is that, this, is, I guess not, and, and this is a legal question, I guess, is, what, how is that, is that worded in the, in the stipulations?
I got it, Rusty.
Yeah, it's, the applicant shall not lease, rent, or sublet any space in the building addition.
Okay.
That's what I mean, though.
And just to clarify the issue for you, if it's a detached structure, our ordinance already addresses that issue. There's a, there's a requirement that says you cannot rent the space for gain at all. Since this is a detached structure that's attached by a roof line, it falls into the definition of building addition. So to try to address the issues that you've raised and that the neighbors raised, we, we've added the stipulation to try to, to, to address that.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you. This is a public hearing. I'd invite anybody who wants to speak for or against this, or even if you think you want to speak for or against it, to come up and be sworn in by Attorney Jeffrey. Anybody here to speak for or against this item? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the, the good discussion about an issue that I think we'll see more and more in the coming, coming months and years. So with that, Mr. Mayor, move to approve item four A twenty twenty-one dash oh two five with a stipulation, number five, that the two-car garage for, shall be maintained for parking. And I think the applicant agreed to that. So that's my, that's my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Dr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote.
Can I ask another question? Wait a minute. Tough question. Does that include all the stipulations that Rusty included in there? Did you say that?
Yes, as, there's five stipulations included in the, in the variance.
Yep.
Including, there was four, now there's five.
So I have a question. I'm not sure that I understand what you were talking about then with the garage, that that could only be used for parking? Is that what you're saying?
The, 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 the layout that the applicant provided shows a two-car garage on the, obviously on the first floor, and it's just a statement that that space will always be maintained for, for indoor car parking as a two-car garage.
In addition to the other four?
Yes.
Okay, this concludes all of our council member questions. We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, please vote. To approve seven zero. Thank you. Item B twenty twenty-one dash zero eight four, public hearing, variance request V twenty-one dash zero two eight, allow variances for lot size, lot width, front, side, and rear setback for annexation of a non-conforming lot. Landlot five one nine, zero point one nine two acres, twenty-four seventy-four Adams Drive, Richard Griffin and Ron Dickinson. This is in Mr. Lindley's ward. Mr. Lindley. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Mr. Martin to come up and explain the request and proposal.
Yes, this is twenty-four seventy-four Adams Drive. It's currently in unincorporated Cobb County. The applicant is requesting to annex the property into the city of Smyrna, tear down the existing house and build a new house. This stretch of road on Adams Drive has seen quite a bit of redevelopment. The, the existing lot is zoned R twenty in Cobb County. The annexate, with the annexation, he's proposing to maintain R twenty zoning category. However, the lot is a non-conforming lot of record. It's eighty-five hundred square feet, it's existing lot. So to tear down the existing home and build some new, build a new home back, it's going to require some variances. It'll maintain a low-density residential, future land use. He's not proposing to change that since there's no change in the density. Some of the surrounding property has low-density residential that's in the county and then medium-density residential in the, in the city, city property that's across Adams Drive. This is the proposed site plan for, for the new home. So you got a, he, he's got a front setback of fifteen feet, a side setback of five, and a rear of fifteen. So it'll have a, it'll have a driveway off of Adams Drive, and it'll go back to a, a proposed garage. With this request, he's requesting five variances. First is to allow a reduction in the middle, minimum lot width from eighty-five feet down to sixty-two. Allow a reduction in the minimum lot size from twenty thousand square feet down to eight thousand three hundred square feet. Number three is allow a reduction in the minimum front set, setback from thirty-five feet to fifteen. Number four is to allow a reduction in the minimum rear setback from thirty-five feet to fifteen. And number five, allow reduction in the minimum side setback from twelve to, to five feet. If you look at the new development along, along Adams Drive, the, the front setback variance from thirty-five to fifteen would bring this house in line with those, those existing houses that were just constructed. Several of the variances for the lot width and lot size are dealing specifically with the existing non-conforming lot. So there, there's no change to that. These, these are the proposed home elevations. And then pictures of the other existing houses in the area. Community Development recommends approval of the annexation from R twenty to Cobb County to R twenty Smyrna with the variances for the development of one single-family unit with following conditions. The minimum lot size should be eighty-three, eighty-three hundred square feet. The minimum lot width should be sixty-two feet. The minimum front setback should be fifteen feet. The minimum side setbacks should be five feet, and the minimum rear setback should be fifteen. And then the final is approval of the, of the variances shall be compliance with the site plan submitted with this application. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Any questions of Rusty?
Do you have a map that shows the, is the surrounding area all in the city of Smyrna? And this is just a single lot? Or do you have that map?
Let me go back to the, that's your zoning map. So all the lots that are not, don't have a color on them are in unincorporated Cobb County. The lots that have a green and a yellow color are in the city of Smyrna. So this is in an area, it's an unincorporated island in, off of Belmont Avenue and Pierce Avenue, basically right across the street here. And I think there's, there's quite a few lots in there that are still in the county. So we've been taking them in by piecemeal for, for a while now.
So I, I guess looking at this, it, just the property directly across the street is the property that's, that it sort of touches, I guess, and the rest of it is still in the county?
The property across the street, it was two new single-family homes, or, or one new single-family home and the existing home. new single-family home and an existing home, and that is in the city. And then the properties to the south, along Pierce Avenue, are in the city. I think he's made a request to try to annex the one immediately to the south, but we run into state law with respect to annexation and not creating an unincorporated island, which that, which would be made if we did that triangular piece to the bottom down there. So, so we're, we're having to maneuver around state law with respect to annexation when we do some of these.
Any other questions of Rusty? All right, this is a public hearing. If there's anybody who wishes to speak for or against this item, if you'll come up and be sworn in by our city attorney. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to item C, which is the annexation. Ordinance 2020-06, approval of ordinance 2021, I'm sorry, 2021-06, annexation request, 100% owners requesting annexation, all tractor parcel, parcel number 17051900250 of land lying and being in lot, land Lot 519 of the 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia, total of less than one acre, 8,500 square feet, and being a portion of Lot 63 and 64 of the J.H. Taylor subdivision, also known as 2474 Adams Drive, Smyrna, Georgia 30080, will be effective April 1st, 2021, and part of Ward 3, and authorizes the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Lindley.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, Mr. Martin, for the explanation. I know there's been a lot of growth, and as we see this map continue to change seemingly from month to month. But with that motion due pass is previously read.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0, thank you. Now we'll move on to the final vote. Item D, 2021-110, final vote, variance request V21-028, allow variances for lot size, lot width, front, side, and rear setback for annexation of a non-conforming lot. Land Lot 519, 0.192 acres, 2474 Adams Drive, Richard Griffin and Ron Dickinson. Mr. Lindley.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Is Mr. Griffin or Mr. Dickinson here this evening? You, any, any comments before council? We appreciate you looking to build a new home in Smyrna, but wanted to give you all the opportunity first.
And my fault for not doing that.
All right. Good deal. Thank you. Less is more.
Things are going well, yeah.
With that, motion due pass is previously read.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Aren't you glad you didn't say anything? Thank you all for being here, and sorry I overlooked that. Item E, 2021-041, this is a public, public hearing, zoning request Z21-003, allow rezoning from R15 and R20 in Cobb County to R8 conditional for the development of five single-family detached homes at a density of 4.07 units per acre, 1.23 acres, Land Lot 632, 2783 Mildred Place, 2791, 2801, and 2811 Madison Street, Baybrook LLC. Mr. Lindley, this is in your district as well.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Martin, if you'll come forward and give us the, the request, please.
Yes, sir. This is another annexation request along with a rezoning of the property. Baybrook LLC brought this request before to P&amp;Z at the, at the February 8th meeting. The P&amp;Z board heard it and recommended approval by a vote of 6-0. The subject property is located at the corner of Mildred Place and Madison Street. A majority of the existing property is already in Smyrna. The property at the corner is in unincorporated Cobb County, so that's why we need to do the, the annexation and the, and the rezoning concurrently. It's 1.23 acres. It is currently four single-family detached homes. The applicant is proposing to tear down those four single-family homes and build five new detached residents. They're requesting a rezoning from R15 and R20 to R8 conditional, and the, the proposed density is 4.07 units per acre. The city's future land use map has this area designated as medium-density residential, which allows up to six units per acre. This request is not proposing to change that future land use designation. So, when you look at it, the properties to the northeast, to the north, and are, is a medium-density residential. The properties to the east are medium-high density residential, which allows up to 10 units per acre. The properties to the south are community activity center, and the properties to the west are low-density residential. This is the proposed site plan. You'll have three houses along Madison Street, and, that'll front on Madison Street, and then two houses that'll front on Mildred Place. All the houses are rear-entry homes that will be accessed through a shared driveway that comes through the back, and we'll, we'll highlight this stuff for you so you can see where, exactly where it's at. With this request, they have a front setback of 20 feet, a side setback of five, and a rear of 20. This is the proposed private drive for the rear-entry garages. This is a proposed detention facility. And then with this request, it'd be a five-foot sidewalk with a two-foot grass strip. With this request, there's four variances associated. The first for a minimum lot width from 50 feet down to 47. Number two is a minimum lot size reduction from 8,000 square feet to 6,500 square feet. Number three is for a front setback reduction from 25 to, 25 feet down to 20. And number four is a minimum rear setback reduction from 25 feet down to 20. This is the proposed home architecture. Give you an idea of what they're going to look like. And then this is a picture of the, the subject property. And then adjacent properties. Community Development's recommending approval from R15 and R20 to R8 for the development of five single-family homes at a density of 4.07 units per acre with the following conditions. The standard conditions from Section 1201 are, apply. Number one deals with the composition of the homes, the exterior facade materials. Number two requires the utilities to be underground. Number three requires the developer to be responsible for any traffic improvements. Number four prohibits the burying of debris on-site. Number five requires them to comply with the tree ordinance. Number six requires a tree plan to be done by a landscape architect. Seven requires all yards and common areas to be sotted. And eight requires a planting schedule for trees on the property. Then we get into special conditions. Number nine are the setback conditions I read earlier. 10 establishes the minimum lot size at 6,500 square, 6,6,587 square feet. And then 11 is the minimum lot width at 47 and a half feet. And 12, the minimum driveway length should be 20 feet from building phase to the private 13, the private drive should be a, a minimum width of 20 feet within, within easement with 16-foot paved surface. 14, the drive, the developer shall install a five-foot sidewalk and two-foot grass buffer along the property frontage. 15, all structures shall be built to a maximum height of 35 feet. 16, the developer shall meet all fire access requirements. 17, the developer shall be responsible for any water and sewer improvements deemed necessary during plan review. 18, the developer shall be responsible for any stormwater improvements deemed necessary during plan review. And 19 is tying the approval of the rezoning to the site plan submitted. And 20 is tying the approval of the zoning to the, to the elevation submitted. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Any questions of Rusty?
Rusty, oh, sorry. Got away there. Hey, it's a unique design, right, with the common area in the back? And I know it's not finalized, right, after the folks have to do the engineering review. But Lot 5 is small, right? That's driving the minimum lot size of about 6,500 square feet, which, you know, makes sense. But I guess my question is, how can we prevent that from being a precedent for future development in that area? Right? Because it's not, we're asking them, we're allowing them to, we're proposing 60, a small lot size because of the large common area.
You know, when we look at these requests, we look at what they can potentially do on the property. He could, in, in the designer, he can come up and speak to this, but I mean, we, we looked at this extensively. I mean, I asked him to try to get to, to bring that lot up to 8,000 square feet. And there's an opportunity to do it, but it's going to create a long lot that, you know, it just doesn't make sense from a maintenance standpoint for somebody that owns property to have a 10- or 15-foot strip that goes from their property all the way to the back of the common area. It just, to us, we'd, to staff, we'd rather square the lot off, pull the development to the street, and protect the large trees at the back of the property as much as possible. You know, we look at every zoning request, and, you know, if, if there's an opportunity to meet the, the zoning requirements, and we'll, we'll tell them, we, you know, we want them to meet the requirements, and we don't think there's a hardship that's necessary. It, it's not, these, these variance requests just aren't given out just because we, you know, it feels good. We look at it and try to make sense of their requests, and try to make, make the best design possible come, come out, so. I don't know every situation that's going to come up in the future, so it's hard to answer, you know, if we would see this. But I would not use this as a precedent for another, for another zoning. They all stand on their own.
Okay. See, that's important for, for me personally, just that's not, it's, it's site-specific. It doesn't set a precedent for other development in the area. Thank you.
Any other questions of Rusty?
I did ask this in our pre-meeting, so I'd just like to bring it up again, that if it's a common area, it'll belong to all five homeowners, that area in the rear, is that correct?
Yes.
And, and I guess my concern was the, the access to that common area from the lots four and five. And I think you said that could be worked out?
Yeah, we will, we'll work that out through the, the plan and review process. And yes, the, the five lots will be in a HOA. They'll be responsible for maintaining the detention upon the common area in the shared driveway. And then during plan review, we'll get them to provide an access easement from the shared driveway to the common area, so everyone has enjoyment of the common space.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'd unlike the last one, I'd like to invite the applicant up. You can take that off, we can hear you better. Yeah, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Norton, council members. For the record, my name is David Meyer. I'm the owner of DGM Land Planning Consultants, and we are the designers of the site plan you're looking at. This evening, I'm representing Baybrook, as you know, Baybrook LLC, applicant of the petition Z21003. As stated at the planning, as I stated at the planning commission last month, your professional staff makes my presentation work very easy. Mr. Martin did a very thorough job in outlining our petition. Everything I heard sounded correct. So it's not to be redundant, I won't repeat everything he just stated, but I did want to emphasize that, as he, as he said, your staff is in support of our petition, as well as last month, we are very pleased to, having been given the green light by the planning commission by unanimous vote. On the overhead, I wanted to point out some examples of our architecture, of the quality of our architecture, which will be similar to this at a minimum. And these photos were actually taken of the Matthew Street development, which is only a stone's throw away from our development. Very attractive, adds a lot to the neighborhood, and we intend to do the same here. Mr. Paholic and Mr. Steve Nance are also present tonight if you have any questions pertaining to architecture or specifics that I'm, if I'm unable to answer, and they can elaborate on that. One question that did come up during the planning commission hearing last month was the value or the sales price of our product. And I believe also Mr. Lindsey had emailed me back, and I appreciate that, asking about that as well. The answer to that is our product, sales price, including the lot and the house, is expected to be, to start at between 550,000 to 625,000. So that's our projected price point. Also brought up was the size of these houses, and we're projecting 1,800 feet to 2,400 square feet of heated space. And, let's see, there was another question brought up just now. Ms. Wilkinson, I believe, asked about the access to the common area. That's a very good question, too, and I should have shown her on the site plan, but if you'll notice the, the turnaround behind Lot 5, we can have a small pedestrian access easement to connect lots four and five to it. It was kind of, one of the renditions had that driveway actually going up and touching it, and I guess I should have added that pedestrian easement back to it. So, so they'll all have very easy access to it. Yes, there will be a homeowners association to maintain it. And another question was brought up about lot size. What, and this is a fair question, too. With these infill projects, often, it's, it's kind of fitting a square peg into a round hole. You've got a zoning code that you're trying to match, and it's not that you're trying, as Rusty said, it's not that you're trying to get all these variances, but you want to, as, as my client has had a vision from the beginning to have an attractive development, you've got to kind of look at everything and weigh it together, and, and come up with the best solution, which we feel like we have. And in this situation, we've got the common area in the back. I don't know if, if you all have visited the site, but there's some stately oak trees, which are going to be very nice. And we see that this is, see this as a passive common area, perhaps a gazebo, a barbecue grill or something back there, just for the, the five families to enjoy and, and be commonly maintained. Maintenance should be low-key. It should be probably lawn trees, and, and maybe some, maybe some small shrubbery. Let's see here. So I'll reserve the remainder of my time in order to answer any questions that may arise. But in conclusion, we're excited about this development, and we hope that you all will agree that this will be a fine asset to the local neighborhood and Smyrna overall. As always, I want to thank Rusty and his professional staff for assisting us in answering questions related to our petition, and we appreciate your consideration and respectfully ask for your approval of our petition. Thank you very much.
Any questions of the applicant, comments? Thank you for being with us.
Thank you.
Mr. Lindley. Oh, is there anybody here who'd like to speak for or against this item? There is. Come up and please, please be sworn in. Thank you. I just wanted to emphasize your name. It's Mr. Lindley.
Hello, I appreciate you bringing this to the public. I live kitty-corner to this development, so I'm kind of looking on it as, this is what I'm going to be looking at out my window for the next 20 years or what have you. I was struck during the first presentation that the neighborhood had been informed about what the lady wanted to do with the addition to her property, and nobody in our neighborhood has any clue what's going on with this. I looked it up online to find out, and I was out there in the street looking at the houses and seeing, well, where would this one go, and where would that one go? And then the neighbors came up and said, well, what are you looking at? I'm like, well, I'm looking at... And then the neighbors came up and said, well, what are you looking at? I'm like, well, I'm looking at, you look at this picture I've got. So I personally would like to have some kind of neighborhood outreach, I guess is the right term, from the developers, so that the people in the neighborhood don't feel that we're being taken over. The, the neighborhood doesn't go, we're not, you know, half million dollar houses in our neighborhood. Like I said, I live kitty corner and I paid a hundred thousand for my house. And I realize it's gone up and I've put a sunroom on the back, et cetera. But again, we're just concerned that this is going to be too crowded for the look of our neighborhood. That's just, you know, my personal opinion and just a few neighbors that I was talking with over the weekend. So that's all I have.
Thank you for your comments. Can you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Lisa Przepasniak, I'll spell that. It's P R Z E P A S N I A K. And I'm at twenty-seven forty-eight Madison Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak for or against this item? Can you swear him in, Jeffrey?
Mr. Mayor, while, while they're doing that, Rusty, can we pull back up the zoning map of what's in Smyrna versus what's Cobb? And then, ma'am, I'm not even going to try and get that last name, I'm going to call you Ms. Lisa. Maybe you can show us on the map where you live.
Can you see the word Scott Court?
Yes, ma'am.
I live just past Scott Court on Madison Street.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Steve Nance. I am the developer of Baybrook Village. Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you so much for hearing this for us. First thing I want to emphasize is that this development is totally family-focused. And I'm so glad to hear a couple of the council members bring up the common area, because in designing this, we wanted a common play area where families could have a safe place for their kids to play on their own grounds. We're family-driven. I'm honored to not have my wife here of forty-nine years. I've got my youngest daughter Jennifer. Her two daughters Bailey and Brooke, in which that's who the development is named after, and my son-in-law, Steve. We also have our realtor here tonight, David Vasco from Compass Realty, that's going to be handling all of our real estate for us. If you look at the plans that we have implemented, it makes it a lot safer area because right now you have three driveways coming in to the one street. We're cutting that back to only one drive, in which makes it safer. We're also implementing sidewalks, in which makes it safer. We just got through remodeling a home on, on Mildred that sold for four hundred thousand dollars. So we're not out of line on what we're proposing to do. We're just trying to better the community in what we're doing here. Our plans are to build all the homes on crawl space and not on slabs. We would love to offer a families a master suite on the main, in which is almost impossible to find this day and time. But everybody loves that, so we're, we're focusing on doing what's best for families. So I just want to say thank you for hearing what we have set our goals to do here. My son-in-law has owned this property for seventeen years. And when he and I and, and our daughter and my wife, we sit down and we started talking about this, we just saw it as a great opportunity for Smyrna and also to get some families in the area, younger families, and improve the community. So thank you so much for hearing us tonight.
Anybody else who has any comments for or against this item? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over. So we're going to have, item F is the annexation ordinance twenty-twenty dash zero-three. Approval of ordinance twenty-one, twenty-one dash zero-three. Annexation request, hundred percent owners requesting annexation. All tractor parcel, parcel number one seven zero six-three-two zero-zero-eight-five-zero of land lying and being in landlot six-three-two of the seventeenth district, second section, Cobb County, Georgia. A total of zero-point-two-six-eight-three acres, being known as twenty-seven ninety-one Madison Street. Smyrna, Georgia, three-zero-zero-eight-zero, and will be effective April first, twenty-twenty-one, in part of Ward Three, and authorizes the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. This is in Ward Three, Mr. Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rusty, can I call you back up? Just clarifying point. On the, the zoning map before us, since item F and the first item of business is the annexation request, just want to make sure what we're seeing in green is already part of the city. The annexation request is for the corner lot?
Yes, the annexation request is purely for that corner lot that has no color on it. The rest of the property that has color is in Smyrna already.
Thank you. With that, motion do pass as previously read. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Welch. All those in favor, please vote. Okay, that's approved seven-zero. We'll move on to item G, which is the final vote, twenty-twenty-one dash one-zero-eight. Final vote, zoning request Z twenty-one dash zero-zero-three. Allow rezoning from R fifteen and R twenty Cobb County to R eight conditional for the development of five single-family detached homes at a density of four-point-zero-seven units per acre. One-point-two-three acres, landlot six-three-two, twenty-seven eighty-three Mildred Place, twenty-seven ninety-one, twenty-eight zero-one, and twenty-eight eleven Madison Street, Baybrook LLC. Mr. Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to the, the developer, and a huge thanks to our city staff as we continue to face requests. This is a little unusual, that it's an annexation in a neighborhood that looks like it's got a couple of holes where some are in Cobb, some are in Smyrna. But thanks to Rusty and Joey for their, their guidance in making it conform with what the city is doing in the larger picture. With that, motion do pass as previously read.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Gould. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved seven-zero. Thanks y'all very much. Item H, this is, we're going to table this request at the request of the applicant, twenty-twenty dash two-three-three, public hearing zoning request Z twenty dash zero-zero-six. Rezoning from NS and RM ten conditional for the development of ten single-family attached townhomes at a density of nine-point-three units per acre. One-point-zero-eight acres, landlot six-six-nine, thirty-three oh-two Atlanta Road, Edgeline LLC. And this will be tabled to the April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one mayor and council meeting. Do I have a motion to table?
Motion.
So moved by Mr. Lindley. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Welch. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven-zero. We'll hear that on April nineteenth. Item I, resolution twenty-twenty-one dash zero-one, public hearing approval of a moratorium on the acceptance of rezoning and variance applications seeking to develop or otherwise use the property as a townhome or for a townhome development from March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one to September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council has received complaints regarding the lack of development and architectural standards for townhome developments. The moratorium would provide the city the opportunity to evaluate existing design standards for new townhome units and to consider amendments to the zoning ordinances regarding townhome developments. The request is to establish a moratorium on the acceptance of rezoning and variance applications for townhome developments starting March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, and extending through and including September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, unless the moratorium is terminated sooner by an act of the city council. Community Development recommends approval of a moratorium on the acceptance of rezoning and variance applications seeking to develop or otherwise use the property as a townhome or for a townhome development from March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one to September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Have Mr. Gould handle this item tonight, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We're going to have, we'll have a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Gould. Is there anybody that has any comments or questions? Ms. Wilkinson.
I thought we were needed to vote to table the other one, but we don't need to do that, the one right before this.
We did, we did vote.
Oh, okay.
Seven-zero, you voted, you voted to table it.
I'm sorry, I was thinking we were still on that other one.
Welcome back, Ms. Wilkinson. Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is something that I think we're, I'm enthused about. It gives us a chance to have some good conversations around how we want to move forward with townhomes in the, in the city and potentially make, you know, make some changes in perhaps its own zoning category. And much if any other council folks had any comments about that.
Yeah, Mr. Wagner. I think, let me take off my mask. Anyone who's probably talked to me for any period of time knows that I'm probably the one that wants to talk about housing more than most and definitely willing to have a lot of conversations as it pertains to housing, development, affordability issues. To me, I have an issue with the, the building standards that have been proposed as we go. And I know this is about a conversation to have those, but I don't think that this issue of the building standards is something that should require this, this moratorium right now. You know, a little background, we've talked about how at a retreat, we've made economic development our number one priority. I think some of the decisions that we're making and potentially making with this might put us in the wrong direction. We've also received some guidance from people that what we need to do to encourage that economic development. And I think what might come out of this really has a potential to hinder that. Over the last year, a lot of us are new on council, new mayor. This council has definitely pushed back on zoning applications, even when pretty clearly we're close to meeting the standards or essentially met the standards that we had in place. I think we've, we've stretched out development discussions, even considering COVID considerations on requests even as small as lot splits and a small handful of townhomes. We even had, I think, on this stage, some negotiations with an applicant after having them jump through hoops for about a year. I think, based on all the situations, we have been recently advised that the council essentially gaining a bad reputation for the process by which we go through these zoning applications. I think that's a problem that we need to address. We've been advised that a clear and consistent zoning process is a benefit to the city, will lead us closer to those goals of economic development. And we've also been advised that restrictive building standards, like the ones that have been discussed as what should come out of this, are a disincentive to economic development. I think everyone knows I'd be thrilled if we had a real, honest, deep conversation about housing, about the affordability issues that we're dealing with, and even about townhomes. But I don't think that's what this conversation really is going to end up being about. I think it's going to be trying to, to implement these more restrictive things that will restrict affordability. It's going to raise prices, and I think if we end up moving in that direction towards these building standards, it's going to clearly indicate that we, as a city, aren't concerned about housing affordability issues that we have here and potentially aren't concerned about real change as it comes economic development. I know this is about a discussion for six months, but personally, I don't think I need to wait six months to know that this is the wrong direction and the wrong path that we need to take for the city.
I don't think there's any conclusion, any predetermined conclusion to those discussions. We've made it pretty clear that discussions will include board of realtors and anybody else who wants to participate, that it may or may not lead to design standards. No, there's been discussion about that. Some, some recommendations from some council members, it's worthy of discussion, it may or may not. But my, my focus here is to put it in, put townhomes into their own zoning category so that we can get a better, get our arms around this better. And I think everybody here has the best interests of the city at heart. We're trying to do the right thing. And I think it's a worthy discussion to have. Are there any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, can, it's, it's Jeffrey. Let's, let's hear from the community development director for a minute.
Okay.
So. Because his department is so centrally involved in, in anything that might come out of these discussions, Rusty probably can speak to, from his perspective, the need to have a pause while this is, is considered in a deliberative way.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Rusty?
Yeah, basically, the, the need for the moratorium is to have the opportunity, to have the discussion, have the opportunity to review without the pressure of pending zoning applications coming down while we're trying to look at these requirements. We'll look at the issue comprehensively. We'll look at it from a site design standard, from architectural standards, and then also look at the impacts with respect to building costs and what, what implementing those standards may do ultimately to affect townhome development in the city. So we're just starting right now with, with the research portion of it and gathering information, seeing what other municipalities doing, are doing, what in, what's going on in the nation with respect to townhomes, and try to see if we can improve the product and make sure, you know, citizens are happy with, with the ultimate end product of, of all this. So really, it's, it's an opportunity to give staff an opportunity to dive into this without pressure of pending applications.
And it doesn't affect any of the applications that have already been made prior to this?
Yeah.
Okay.
So yes, everything that's come, come to council for approval is, is still in the pipeline and still working its way through the development process. They will still get their permits if they meet all the, the code standards and everything. This is just for new applications that would come before you guys for rezoning. So, and, and if y'all decide, if we get through this in two months and everyone's satisfied with the standards and they adopt them, then you can end the moratorium earlier than that upon your action. But we'll, we'll work diligently and try to get through it and, and address all the concerns.
Any other comments of council or questions for Rusty?
You know, I, I think one of the benefits of this, Rusty, is that like, you do an appropriate job of just saying, hey, we need to make sure we are being, we communicate correctly with our developers, right? So they're not wasting their time, and they know when they come forward with a workable plan, they'll be successful, right? So in my mind, I think this is really what we want to end up with. At the end, we're going to have something, hey, these, these is what we expect. This is what we want to see. So if you're going to come to, come to the city of Smyrna with a development, keep these key priorities in mind. It does not necessarily preclude density, right? It does not necessarily preclude or eliminate price points, but it's going to be a clear definition of what we think is in the best long-term interest of, of the city, right? So when we have, development comes for us and we have multiple revisions in it, it's not because we're trying to be difficult. It's because we're trying to end up with a product that's going to stand the test of time. And six months later, somebody doesn't scratch their head and say, what were they thinking? So this is, this is a timeout that's going to allow us to get this stuff sorted out. When we come back, developers will be, it'll be a much more efficient process in my mind for them to be successful.
Okay. Other comments? Thank you, Rusty. Thank you, Jeffrey. Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with that, I move to approve item four-I, I think. Four-I, resolution twenty-twenty-one dash oh-one, as previously read.
Second. The motion, I have a second by Mr. Welch. All those in favor, please vote. All right, it's approved six-one with Mr. Wagner voting in the negative. Item five is privileged licenses. We have none. Item six, formal business. We don't have any formal business this evening. Item six, formal business. We don't have any formal business this evening, nor commercial building permits. Item eight is the consent agenda. Mr. Bennett, can you please read the consent agenda for council approval?
Yes, sir. Item A, MIN twenty twenty one dash fifteen, approval of the February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one committee of the whole meeting minutes. Item B, MIN twenty twenty one dash sixteen, approval of the March first, twenty twenty one pre-council meeting minutes. Item C, MIN twenty twenty one dash seventeen, approval of the March first, twenty twenty one mayor and council meeting minutes. And item D, twenty twenty one dash zero nine eight, authorization to enter into a contract with OpenGov for an all-in-one online citizen service platform for permitting, licensing, plan review and inspections in the amount of one hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and two dollars to be funded out of the CIP fund balance.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Mr. Lindley. Do I have a second? Second by Dr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Item nine is ward and committee reports. We'll start tonight with Mr. Glenn Pickens.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I have no report this evening.
Mr. Wagner.
Nothing this evening.
Mr. Lindley.
No report, sir.
Mr. Welch.
No report.
Ms. Wilkinson. I bet you have something, Ms. Wilkinson.
Oh, no report.
No, no, Mr. Gould.
Really? I gotta be the one? Uh, just a, a quick plug for one of my favorite nonprofits here in the city called Path to Shine. It was founded here at St. Benedict's in, in Smyrna, and it's a mentoring program, uh, for, um, for young folks, uh, school-age kids. And they have two programs in, at Argyle and Norton Elementary here and also at, at St. Benedict's. So their annual fundraiser is coming up. It's a golf outing. Uh, I'll post the information on my Facebook page and it's a, it's a great cause. They have developed into seventeen locations around the state. Uh, and it's just, it's a good, good, successful program started here in Smyrna.
Thank you, Mr. Gould. Dr. Wheaton.
I would have broken the pattern anyway, Tim, so. I just want to say a word of thank you to our, our city fire and police. We had a fire, residential fire down Ward Seven, um, this weekend. A pretty horrible scene went over there on Sunday morning. Um, but I, I know from the community and everyone else, a really great job by our fire and police department. Uh, really helping and, and really a big thank you to the community as, as well, pulling together and already trying to help out the residents down there. Um, and as well, uh, we have the Oakdale Road Town Hall meeting, uh, tomorrow at six thirty, virtual meeting. Um, there's a notice on the calendar, but also you should have got an email if you're in my ward on the mailing list. Uh, I hope you'll be able to attend with that in you.
Mr. Bennett.
No, sir.
Jeffrey?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Heather? Not this evening. All right. Item ten is show cause hearings. We have none. Item eleven is citizen input. We have one citizen signed up to speak. Uh, Sally Knox, come forward. And if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Do I take this off or?
Sure, that's fine.
You take it off?
Yes.
Uh, my name is Sally Knox. I live at thirty-four twenty-one Navajo Trail, uh, Smyrna, here in Smyrna. Um, uh, and, and, um, where do I live? Anyway, I've lived in the Smyrna bindings area since nineteen eighty-four. Worked for Delta Airlines since nineteen eighty-three. I had previously built a house in Forest Hills on Lee Street and also, uh, remodeled and refurbished a house on Lee Street as well. I presently live in, um, Creewood Forest. And the reason I'm here is to ask for your support and help in a couple of issues with our neighborhood. I've got some pictures here of the entrance for each of you.
You want to give them to Ms. Heather?
Couple of three pictures. The entrance off of Atlanta Road. We have wanted to for years, um, have a sign built. We were promised during the Max Bacon years that we could have grandfathered in a post and board sign. I do like the monument sign better. Um, our neighbors consider, we have a lot of rental property in our neighborhood. Um, we have several families that are completely out of their homes due to the hurricane damage. Uh, big oak trees demolished their homes. So we have some financial constraints. We do not have an HOA, so we're gonna have to raise the money for a sign. Um, so of course we need your approval for where to put the sign and what it will look like, monument or a post and board. And, um, help with, um, improving the blighted entrance off of Atlanta Road. Um, a couple of the, um, medians are filled with, uh, gas tanks in the ground and, um, metal boxes. And there's also posts, iron posts, that if they're not needed, uh, we would like for them to be taken down. And, um, we've got a lot of hard workers in our neighborhood. They're willing to volunteer. In fact, this, this Saturday is our first Keep Smyrna Beautiful Sponsored, Clean Up Our Neighborhood Day. And we're gonna be working from ten to twelve or beyond, uh, to clean up our neighborhood. And so we're gonna also be meeting and discussing, uh, fundraising for our sign. We would also, through, some of the residents have already expressed that they would like a sign off of Ridge Road as well because there's an entry there, but we can address that later. Um, we would really appreciate your support. Um, the, the one little, there's a picture of it there of the retail shopping center. There's two stores. There's a dry cleaners and there's an upholsterer. I'm, I'm a big supporter of the upholsterer. I've spent plenty of money there. They do a really good job. Um, but as many small businesses have experienced during COVID, they are, uh, they're doing okay now. They shut down for a while, but the dry cleaners next door, they're the owners, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Kim. And they are, they're having a hard time financially with their business because people, as we can imagine, are staying home. They're not dry cleaning their clothes. They're sitting in their PJs doing their work. And so their businesses suffered. So I went to her today just to kind of get out of the box and get some creative ways of making money. And I told her, I said, we will come and clean up your parking lot. We will edge, mow, blow, pressure wash, cut, grind, whatever we have to do to get this place looking nice. And you can pay us just a hundred bucks and we'll put the hundred dollars towards our sign. And then I told her we would maintain this for fifty dollars a month and we'll put that towards our sign. Well, she liked that idea. She's gonna get back with me, but, you know, I think we really need to work with our businesses too that are suffering during this time. And, um, I don't want them to go out of business. They are, they're a great business and so is the upholsterer. So, um, there's some part that City of Smyrna can play because those medians are the City of Smyrna's responsibilities. You maintain, to mow and edge, and they look pretty bad. They, they mostly are weeds. They need pruning of the crape myrtles. Um, so we're just asking for help with our sign approvals. We're also asking if there might be a reduction in the application fee of three hundred dollars for the sign, uh, sign application or, uh, complete waiving of that fee just because of our limited resources. We'll do what we can to raise our own money and, and we'll work hard and it helps City of Smyrna out and, and help our businesses out at the same time. So I think I covered everything, but if you take a look at those pictures, they, they pretty much, uh, spell it out. How, most of my friends that come to my neighborhood, they're like, your neighborhood looks really ugly. I don't even know where I'm going. They don't even know where to turn. You know, it doesn't look like a neighborhood. So, um, we're willing to do our part if y'all could help us out and support us in any way you can.
Well, thank you for being willing to help the businesses and I'm sure you'll get with, with Councilman Gould and talk about specifics.
Right.
And we appreciate your coming tonight and sharing that with us.
Sure, glad to do it.
And just, just as a follow-up, you know, we, we, it came out last week that as part of the stimulus, Smyrna is gonna be getting some money, uh, that we're gonna be helping our businesses with and, and citizens. So look forward to that and discussions about how to spend that money, um, in days to come. So thank you again for being here.
Okay, great. I appreciate it. I'll just show you one more thing. These are, uh, we're working with commercial signs. They do a lot of the City of Smyrna signs. And we had put these together a couple of, five years ago, actually. This, this issue's been brought up and dropped. But anyway, I want to see it to fruition and so do the rest of our neighbors. But there's, there's a myriad of ways to do the signage. So we're willing to do whatever is best for City of Smyrna and our neighborhood and looks good and, and proves, proves that entryway.
Very good.
I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there, nobody else signed up? Is there anybody else who had any comment? Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Penny. And if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Nikita Arnold from Fifth Third Bank. We'll be opening up the brand-new location, uh, May third um, at forty-five twenty South Cobb Drive. Um, so I'm just here to pretty much introduce myself. Um, thank you, Mayor Norton. I know we have spoken on the phone before and wanted to meet, uh, Councilman Tim Gould, because I know we'll be in his ward. But wanted to provide you guys some information tonight, um, just so that you can see the new design of the branch. Um, and so on the top right, um, it's basically gonna show you, we're gonna be like a cafe-style, um, banking center, something like you've never seen before. Um, and then on the bottom right, you'll see our technology table. So we will be able to host some events there. Um, there'll be a seventy-inch TV in there for huddles or, you know, any sort of event if we were trying to, you know, come together and collaborate on a specific cause. Um, and then on the bottom right is the FlexSpace office, but all of my information is on here. I do welcome everybody to come out on May third, um, to our grand opening. I'd love to see you guys there and do business with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I appreciate you reaching out, I guess it was a couple of weeks ago now, and talking about wanting to be involved in the community and how do you get involved with the Public Safety Foundation and the Business Association. And I wish that, I wish other businesses do the same thing you did to get involved right away in the community. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishes to make any comments? All right. If there's no other business to be brought before this body, I declare us adjourned at eight eighteen. Thank you all very much.